At this time, I'd like to call the special meeting for April the 23rd, 2025 to order. I have here tonight with me Mr. Black, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Forehand, I am Nancy Long, Mr. Jeff Sealy, and Mr. Reggie Underwood. If we could please stand for invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for bringing us all here tonight. We ask for your guidance to wise decisions for what is best for the county. We pray, dear Heavenly Father, that you will be with us throughout this season, throughout this week, and bring us all back together again. These things pray in your name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I will start this evening by saying that there are some change, changes to the agenda tonight that we need to consider making. And one of those is to let the public know that Mr. Cully unfortunately has come down with, is very sick, is at home. We want to keep him in our thoughts and prayers. And he will not be here to present the budget tonight. We will move that to our next, next meeting on May the 13th, I believe that is. So that will need to be removed from our agenda for tonight. Are there any other changes to consider? Mr. Thomas?
Madam Chair, we're discussing changes to the agenda. We have consent agenda item 2A, which is to authorize Public Works to send down an RFP to get an architect for the design of the Dawn Community Center. I think we need to expand that to include some other things. The county has been looking at like the expansion of the bus garage. I think we all agreed we were going to do that. And possibly have the architect look at the functionality and the capability to put classrooms in the old Lady Smith Elementary Building and the old Bowling Green Elementary Building.
Yes, there has been discussion. And I did check with legal and we can discuss that tonight and amend that as the discussion goes and the motions or our main decisions are made. So thank you.
We're going to make that a separate item and not just consent. So you can put it wherever you'd like on the agenda.
According to our legal advice, we can discuss it at that on the consent and modify it.
I would just make a motion to pull item 2B from the consent agenda.
Okay.
And 2A, I'm sorry, item 2A from the consent agenda. And then it'll be an agenda item you can discuss.
Okay, so we can put it down as, where should we place this? Let's put this where presentation was. So we'll move 2A to the three slot.
Yeah, if you could, any order you want, you can do it first, you can do it second.
Okay, we'll just do it where it is first. Okay.
As non-consent.
But not as consent.
Right.
All right, so this is motion to pull it from the 2A from the consent agenda. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Therefore, we'll leave it as 2A, but it will now be under our regular agenda. Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. All right. So our first item tonight is opening board comments. Mr. Black?
Thank you, Chairman Long. Just have a few, just a reminder, this Saturday, we're doing a team up to clean up Cross Caroline. I know the Sheriff's Office participating, Lake Landor is participating, Wright's Chapel. I think that Wright's Chapel is participating, the Catholic Church is participating. I know all along Lady Smith Road. So anyone that is willing, and we will take any help we can get on any road that's in the county. So to clean up trash. And then Mr. Forehand had posted something again. I know I've mentioned this before on social media yesterday about the pickleball court for this morning. They, they look fabulous. So once again, thanks to Public Works. And there's a lot of people that are using those and that are excited about them. And they're, they're talking about every day. There's a group that meets every day, almost daily down there to, to play pickleball. So it's become a very, very popular thing that was built for the public. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. And also, what are the hours for the cleanup?
The hours, it's on advertisement, but most of the, like, we're starting on the western side. We're starting at 7:30 and we're meeting at 7:30 and then starting at 8:00. But most of them around that in the morning. You can contact the individual ones.
All right, thank you.
Eric Johnson from Public Works is the contact person.
I've seen the flyers out. All right. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple, well, one, one brief on them, one kind of long. But I just want to remind the board, and I think all the board members got the email regarding the State Corporation Commission and their, the reasons for the increase in their rates. And according to Dominion, they're saying the reason for the rate increase is due to complying with the Clean Energy Act and their request for increased profits. And I think it's up to the county and maybe the county should send a letter to the State Corporation Commission that says, we don't agree with that. And we believe the State Corporation Commission and our local legislatures should try to maintain the cost as much as they can. So that's going to be a key for all of the citizens of the county. And the other one I had was, was just to kind of remind people about the county's economic development activities, which is really what we use to finance and fund a lot of our things. To those that remember, not long ago, sand and gravel was the county's main business. Not many people liked it, but we lucked out with good neighbors like Cheney and Luckstone, who supported and benefited the county. After the economic downturn, we looked at distribution centers or warehouses, which have been a big boom for the county. But due to the increased truck traffic, most people thought we had enough of those. And I think I'd agree with them. And not all of our projects were winners. We had, had Harris Teeter, but they got bought by somebody else. So we lost that one. We had Russell Stover, but they decided to leave. So we had to look for something else. And now we're, you know, lucky to have MCD, which has been a great technology partner. And they're expanding into data centers. And data centers has become our business for now. And I think once the county and the citizens understand that we've taken the water concerns out, there's, there's no issues with water now because they're all recycled, or recycled, recirculated. So, so we've taken that out and we've gone through the siting process. So it appears to be a good business that we're working on. I don't think all of these will come to fruition, but those that we have will be a great benefit to the county. So I thought it was important that folks knew that and at least understood what we've been doing and where we've gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Mr.
Forehand.
Forehand. Where I was, I started to go the other way back to Mr. Black.
Just one item for the board to think about. We are approaching, and the data is conflicting online about when this county was actually formed. Some sites, actually the county's information say March of 2017, 27. And then others say likely 17, 28. But we're two years out from our 300th anniversary. And we just need to think about this long term because we need to, we don't turn 300 but once. So something we need to think about for a grand gathering in the county. So thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Mr. Forehand. I like a good party, a good birthday party. I attended the Go Virginia conference yesterday in Fredericksburg at Mayor Washington. Saw Dr. Kbaric there and several other people. It was, it was well done and learned some things and saw a lot of people. And other than that, we have been busy, like a lot of people, with cutting grass and enjoying this beautiful weather. So I hope everyone takes time to either get out and play pickleball or cut grass or plant flowers, do something before we're all complaining about the heat. Mr. Sealy?
Since I have allergy voice tonight, I will, I will forego any comments. Thank you.
Your scarface voice.
Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many of you probably don't remember, but back in 2008, there was a issue in Dawn where they created a, the Dawn fund to build houses for low-income people through Quinn Rivers. All of the money that people paid into the mortgage payment, minus the money from the grant, was given back to Caroline County. I don't know if you guys knew that or not. But it's been used over the years that I've been on the board since 2011 to help citizens across the county who were in need financially for new roofs, new ramps that they went to the hospital and things of that nature. Probably, mostly you probably don't remember, but just so happens that a young lady that was in Mr. Sealy's district called me about three months ago and her roof was caving in. And we used that part of that fund to help, to help her put a roof on. And that money has been used across the county, not just, even though it was paid in by the Dawn Community, that money has been used almost in every district, I think, except for Mr. Forehand's district, to help senior citizens who had a need. And Mr. Whitman was really taking care of it for us. But I got a note from, I'm not going to call her name because I don't, not sure she may want me. But the young lady that we helped, our senior, she was, I think she, she's 91, I believe, 89er. And we helped put a roof on her home. And she just sent a nice thank you, thank you note to the, to the board and saying thank you for the support that we gave her. So that was something very nice that we have done for the citizens of the county. Second, I wanted to talk about, and I had Mr., listened to Mr. Thomas talk about the water issue and the data centers. When we went to the General Assembly to talk about the water issue and part of the concern is not only drawing water from the rappahannock, but it's where you discharge. And come to find out that you don't want water discharged to high levels into the Matapana. So what do you do with that? Six billion gallons, if we get the permit, what do you do with that extra water? Well, DEQ says what they want you to do with that water is use it for revenue to sell to data centers. So this is the reused water that we talked about a long time ago. I think we need to go back and look at, see, make sure that we're all mixing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. Because we've gotten, I mean, the more I look into the data center, there, there is a need for the self-cooled systems. But we have a need also to discharge in order to help down to Bowling Green and to help growth. We're going to need to discharge water into the Matapana. So we need to look at, to make sure that we're being eco-friendly ourselves to the ecosystem. So I just wanted to bring that to our attention. I think that's a topic for discussion. Because I don't think we all fully understood when we first got into the data center discussion. And I think the more we do, the more we get into learning and educating ourselves, I think the better off we'll be. And that's my comments, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Thank you for sharing the note. And we appreciate her appreciating, appreciating the service. And it's nice to hear Mr. Whitman still around and kicking and helping out. Can't keep a marine down, that's for sure. All right, are there any other announcements at this time? Mr. Thomas? Oh, mine, mine. I went to the, to the conference. And I will say that it was a good one and it was nice to see a lot of people. And there are some grants and some things out there that we can look into. I have, I have had a couple of times when I've gotten a little frustrated with some comments about our water permit and that some of our neighbors seem to think that we shouldn't be looking out for our citizens. But yet, they've been pulling water for, for years. So it's, sometimes it takes a lot to bite your tongue and just say, well, we're going to leave it up to DEQ and we've, we've been working on this a long time and we'll see what happens. So I think this will, will come about and hopefully we will get the permit soon and be able to move forward on that project also. But sometimes decisions just aren't easy to make and waiting is not my best quality. So we look forward to moving forward with, with the application and getting that water permit so we can provide water for all our citizens that is safe and reliable. All right, that takes us now to appointments. For, for Reedy Church District?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'd like to ask the board to nominate Mr., approve the nomination of Mr. Thomas Holmes for the Board of Equalization for Reedy Church District.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, so moved. And for Western Carolina, Mr. Black?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Robin Moran.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, so moved. And we thank them both for their willingness to serve. All right. And consent agenda, takes us down to B since we have moved to, down to.
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that we pull item A from the consent agenda.
We already did that. We did, we, yeah.
We're going to leave it there and then discuss it.
We're going to move it to, to.
We're going to make it agenda item 1A, so that should be next. It's just not part, it's just not part of consent. We can do it now.
All right, all right. But we're going to make, it will be an agenda item, which is the supplemental appropriation for fiscal year 24, 25 for Public Works and to retain proposals for an architect for the design of the Dawn Community Center. Discussion is now open. Who would like to go first?
I can go first if you want.
Mr. Thomas?
We, we are going to retain an architect to do some work in, in Dawn. And I know the, the board responded to some discussions with the school board at our joint meeting. And, you know, I think we all, we all want the same thing. We all want better schools. We all want the facility to be top-notch. We want a great school system because that's a great economic development driver. So in, in individual discussions, there were ideas of, why does, why doesn't the county do things that it can do right now to help the schools? So one thing, the bus garage belongs to the county. So we can expand the bus garage. I think Mr. Forehand had that idea first, which was a great idea. And most of the board agreed. And the other thing is we can, we can look at the possibility of putting pre-K into the old Lady Smith School, what's now Lotus Academy, and putting some of pre-K into the old Bowling Green Elementary, which is part of Central Office. I'm not sure they're all used. But maybe the architect could work with the school board in that to see if it was feasible. That's something the county could fund. And we could eliminate the overcrowding possibly by the school year for 25, 26. So I think it's good to look at that. And while we do that, I think we can talk about expanding the Bowling Green, the current Bowling Green Elementary, which has a knockout wall, which would give them space in a year or two while they decide, while the school board decides what their priorities are for what's next. And I think we can help them. They, you know, they spend a lot of time on their proposals. Unfortunately, most of those proposals would take three to five years to eliminate the overcrowding. So if we could do something right now, and again, like I said, the county could fund right now, we would help right away. So that's why I wanted to discuss it. And there may be other ideas, and that's what our discussion should be focused on.
Open up the floor for discussion on this topic. Mr. Underwood, I see your mic on.
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. You know, I know that the overcrowding issue is paramount right now, that we do something immediately. Particularly, like I said, Bowling Green at Lewiston Clark is just, you know, you hear night, I don't have to go and see it, I, I hear it almost every day. When I go over to Dawn, to the park, there are people at the park and teachers at the park as well who do complain that, that it is a major issue. And so we're in an emergency situation right now. And I think that we may not come up with the best solution, but it's one that I think I'd like for schools to at least consider. For us to, this board, to hash this out today and ask the school board to at least consider our option to get us to our next step immediately. I think right now we need some immediate relief and a plan for immediate action. So I think anything that we can do to make the situation better, we need to do. And I know that we can spend one-time money to do the things out of the fund because it's not recurring operational. And that's what we said would get us in trouble if we spent money that we had to spend over and over again. But we had enough in the fund balance that we could spend some money out of the fund balance and do this without hurting our really accreditation for borrowing money down the road. So I'm in favor of Mr. Thomas of looking at, and this board hashing this out today and presenting a plan to schools and say, this is what we'd like to see. And give us a reason why this can't be done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Mr. Sealy?
You know, excuse me, we've talked about Bowling Green Elementary, we talked about the bus garage. Any options we can explore that we can afford? I think we need to move forward now, and I'll just leave it there.
Mr. Moran?
Well, looking at their long-term and short-term plans, one, one of the constants was needed extra classroom space in the middle school. So I would like for us to add to that request for architectural services to include that addition. And along with the, the addition to the bus garage, so that would be a minimum of three. If we can do a general statement where it's for other architectural services for perhaps Bowling Green or something like that, that can get us an immediate, immediate relief, then, then so be it. It's just a matter of wording and, and what we get back from the RFP. So, but I do think, and I've said this before publicly, we should move on that because that is something that is an urgent need. We have a big fifth grade class that's going to be in that building next year. We have a big fourth grade class that's going to be in that building in two years. And the faster we get that design worked out, and it's not going to be a fast process to get it designed or to get it built, not right now with all the economic activity in, in Virginia. But so anyway, that's, I think we need to add that to it.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Mr. Black?
Yeah, I mean, there's just a couple of things here. I guess my thing would be that we, since we're doing this, I mean, adding classrooms to Bowling Green is something that I, I'm actually very much in favor of. However, it really doesn't help, really doesn't help Lewiston Clark and Lady Smith where the growth is, unless you redistrict. And then the other thing too is if we're serious, we've all made statements about that there's a need for a new school in a particular timeframe. And I think the schools told us that even if we started doing it today, we had a design for today. Your new elementary school is going to be four, four or five years down the road. If you're going to do this architectural work, first of all, I don't know what these architects, do they do? Like, I mean, the Dawn Community Center is very different than a, I don't know if they do them together, if you can get one that does all of them together. Because I know in going to VACO conferences, some of them specialize in school construction, some of them specialize in different government buildings. So maybe we can find one that specializes in everything. But the second thing is if we're going to actually be serious about trying to alleviate the pressure on the schools, I think we need to come to the table with the idea that we, we, we're going to be, we're going to be planning at the same time we're doing this. And I don't have a problem with anything when it's said. But I think we need to come to the table with a, a plan in place for the new elementary school and where is it going to be? And have, if we're doing it for saving money, then why don't we throw that in too? So that way, people will know, hey, look, five years, six years down the road, it's not our immediate concern, but this is, we do have a drawing that's going to be on the books. So we can start working on that as soon as all this other stuff that was mentioned tonight is taken care of.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Forehand?
Have we bottomed out on the building P issue?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I don't know who to answer, who's.
Yeah, Mr., I think Mr. Cully resolved that with the, one of the, I guess, people that was responsible for purchasing building P.
Okay.
They talked about it at the end of.
That, that, that issue is what I'm, what I'm hearing.
That's, that's my understanding.
If the, the building P issue is still current.
That, that is off the table, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay.
And so what I'm hearing is that we need to put out an advertisement for bids for an architect firm that would work. Retain an architect design firm for Dawn Community Center. Also for adding the rooms to Bowling Green Elementary, Caroline Middle School.
Yeah, and maybe that's where we need to kind of discuss a little more to make sure we get them all straight. And, and when we put this RFP out, I guess we'll have to, you know, make sure Mr. Pardon and our legal staff know, you can put an RFP out where any one firm can bid on one or two items in that package. Or one firm could bid on all of them. But we need to make sure we give the bidders the opportunity to say, this is a piece I can do. Because there are, you know, as Mr. Black said, and I spoke to a construction guy the other day, he just does totally new construction. So he would be somebody who'd look at maybe a new school or an addition or something like that. But renovations may be a smaller architect. We may be able to get some local folks involved that aren't architects but are builders that could say, I can fix this for X number of dollars. So make the RFP as open as possible and allow bidders to, you know, respond completely or partially. And then we'll put the results together. And if we need to go back for another piece, we go back for another piece.
With four projects.
I got the, I think I got the list, but I wanted to go back to Mr. Black's thing about the, the new school, the new, the new elementary school. We all agreed that we should have a new elementary school. I think we said that. Probably going to be on the western side of the county where growth is. We all said that.
I didn't say that.
Okay, we didn't say that.
We did not.
But, but, but what we, what we need to do is, is to let the school design that school or at least tell us what they think should be in that school before we put that piece in the RFP. I mean, we're all saying we think that there is a need for a new elementary school in the county.
Right?
Right? Mr., uh, well, just let me get to first, I mean, just, just let me get to first, yes. We all, we all say there's a need for a new elementary school.
No, no. The, the purpose of our conversation was to alleviate the emerging need.
The initial.
Right. That's our discussion.
Okay.
Is to take care of what we need to take care of right now to make sure that we at least have a plan to say schools, this is what we'd like to see happen until we get to the design of the elementary school. This is now, immediate.
So now we're saying, so I could repeat it back. Now we're saying the Dawn Community Building.
Yes.
The bus garage.
Yes.
Classroom feasibility at the old Lady Smith and the old Bowling Green.
Yes.
And expand Bowling Green Elementary.
The, the knockout.
The knockout wall.
Of Bowling Green Elementary.
And/or the middle school addition.
You said that.
Clay said the middle school addition.
Middle school addition, Bowling Green knockout, bus garage, Dawn, and the feasibility of use of classrooms at Lady Smith and.
Right.
Bowling Green Elementary.
Now, now one thing, if I could add one last thing for me before you go, Mr. Black, the, we said before, sometimes it seems like you're throwing good money after bad when you do renovations on a building that you may not keep. If we put in a significant investment into either one of these, we ought to consider possibly that becoming a, a building that the county could use for staff expansion at some point in time. But and we're not throwing money away.
And, and Mr. Thomas, if I can, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
Remember at our last work session, schools gave us estimates for the cost of sale for those buildings. So we do put money in. And we turn around and have to sell those. There's some, some money that's going to be recouped. Um, according to their numbers, three point five million and three point seven is what they think they value those two buildings. So there is some value there that if you had put money in, it's still someone's going to be recouped. So all is not lost.
Right. And I, I, I agree with that. I'm, I'm just looking for this investment and what, and what this investment could mean in the future.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure that'll require another discussion with the school board to figure out how that happens.
I'm sure this will require another discussion. Yes, sir.
Well, we could probably do this and, and have it ready by the school year twenty five, twenty six. Okay.
Well, first we have to find somebody and get opinions from architects who, who know what they're looking at and can give us the financials and the timeline. Uh, I just want to be clear, the now, um, offices that this, um, the administration uses, the old Bowling Green Elementary. We're not talking about, we're talking about using part of that for pre-K, adding pre-K to that now to, to over for next year while we're working on the others, six rooms to alleviate. So that shouldn't be a big change since that used to be an elementary school anyhow, but, um, that's maybe something we have to discuss further down the road. But right now we're concentrating just on putting out and, uh, requests for bids from architects for these projects. Is that correct, Miss?
Yes. The only thing that I was going to say is, is, uh, the, the supplemental appropriation that we asked for the two hundred and twenty five thousand. There's no money in the budget for this. So, uh, the, the, the two hundred and twenty five supplemental appropriation that we asked for tonight, of course, only, only covered the, the, the new Dawn Community Center. So we would have to come back at the next meeting with an estimate to, to, for the additional funds that would need to be appropriated. And the question is that they, I think that Chris and I need to talk about further is whether we can move forward with the RFP before those additional funds. Because it's an estimate, you know, you don't know what the cost is going to be to receive proposals, but we know it's going to be a lot more than two hundred and twenty five thousand. Um, so we would come back with, at, at the next meeting with, uh, with another supplemental request for the funds that we think would be needed to add these projects.
But, Mr., I'm, I have a question. How would we know until we spoke to, until we have designs? Do they just give them some?
Well, it's, it's, I, I don't know that we know, Joey would have to answer that, but I don't know for sure. We know that two hundred and twenty five is the exact amount for the Dawn Community Center design. It's an estimate based on, I'm talking with, with people in the industry and, and coming up with an educated guess, but I don't, I don't know that we know for sure two twenty five is the number. We probably, you know, may, may have cushioned it a little bit. Uh, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're just going to need money appropriated for this purpose.
Well, but doing it that way, you'll delay the, the, the actual start by whatever next month is.
Right. So I think the, the idea with the RFP is we, we don't.
Get the architect.
Well, well, but we want, if we put out an RFP, we need people to be reasonably confident that we have the funding to do the project that they spend the time and effort to put a bid on.
Right, right.
And so I think we have two options. We can either revise the RFP that's in your packet now to include these additional items, bring it back to you the next meeting with the supplemental appropriations that are just estimates for those additional items. But then we can issue a kind of standard RFP because then we have the money in the budget to do what we're talking about. The alternative, if you want to do something tonight, would be to proceed, but I think in, in, as a matter of practice, good practice, we would need to put in the RFP, funding has not yet been approved for these projects, but we anticipate that it will be, you know, in short order, something to that effect, to put people on notice.
I mean, you can do that legally.
We, we could. It may impact, you know, the bids that we get. Um, but I think we'd have to do one or the other as a matter of practice. And it's just a, it's just a question of whether the board feels comfortable waiting till May thirteenth or whenever the next meeting is to issue the RFP.
Well, if, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Mr. Black.
Can I ask a detail, like, um, something kind of like the RFP? I mean, that's like, I mean, I understand we're doing that, but my concern with what has been brought up tonight, and, and I don't disagree that there's, you build in bowling, the, the classrooms in Bowling Green, but how does that benefit Lady Smith? The highest and fastest growing area in this county, we can, we can pretend it's not, but the western side of the county, Pendleton, Lady Smith Village, I mean, they are growing at an unbelievable pace. That's where the growth is. So adding to Bowling Green is something that is needed absolutely, and it's a short-term fix, but how is that alleviating what's going on at our biggest elementary school, which can't handle anymore, Lewis and Clark? So I, I, I guess I understand the short term, but there, there is with, that'll help the Bowling Green, but I don't see how it benefits the people on the western side of the county. And, and, and I mean, unless they're doing redistricting, which is only a matter of like, when you start talking about six classrooms, you're talking about a hundred and twenty students, which Bowling Green is going to need that. So you're not going to redistrict to add Bowling Green for six classrooms.
No, we're, we're not saying redistrict, Mr. Black. I think what we're saying is that we could move those students to the old Lady Smith Building.
What students?
Hear me out first. To get those stu- students out of Lewis and Clark Madison. That would alleviate the overcrowding in those buildings. And while we're working on a new, looking at a, that would alleviate immediate situation. That's immediate.
So, yeah, and once again though, once again, it's my understanding that there are like three to maybe it's five classrooms in each school that are pre-K, right? So technically, if you move pre-K, if you move pre-K, you're, you're adding like three or three to five classrooms. The way the growth is going over there, especially in the Lady Smith area, that's not going to last long. And if you take pre-K, if you take pre-K out of Bowling Green, then you're adding, you know, the six classrooms plus three or five, whatever. So you're, you're now, you're adding nine classrooms to Bowling Green because you're taking, taking that out, but that still doesn't alleviate because Bowling Green, I understand is growing, but it still doesn't solve the problem for where your biggest need is, which is, which is Lady Smith. That is the biggest.
Right now, and, and it does in the media, right now it does.
Not really. I mean, for, for, uh, for maybe a year or two. I mean, I, I.
Hundred and forty-four kids, sixteen classrooms right now that are pre-K and, uh, head start. Sixteen classrooms.
That's four, that's five classrooms per.
No, that's not, it's many more than five classrooms. But there's sixteen classrooms that are being used according to the numbers that I have for.
That would be five classrooms per school. That would be five classrooms per school.
Yeah, maybe.
That would be five classrooms per school. So if you did three, if you did five, sixteen classrooms, it's five classrooms.
Right.
Five a school and one at six.
I'm just saying, I think we need to try to alleviate that situation as quickly as possible. And I think we can do that by next year. I think we can put on pressure to get this done before August of tw- twenty-five. To give some relief right now. I think, and that's what we're looking for. In, in our short-term plan, our, our intermediate plan, I'll say, is to now, wh- where do we go from this one to three-year period? We have to have it, something else in place also, correct?
I, I, I get it.
And that is the possibility of building the new elementary school. To, we have to redistrict then, we can alleviate, but at least we'll have a new elementary school to take a look at the populations in the county to determine if we need to redistrict.
Can I add on at Madison now? I mean, at, uh, Lewis and Clark now? Uh, can I add on?
I don't, I have no idea. I, I, I have, that would.
We can't. We never got an answer. We don't know the answer.
I thought we said we couldn't add on the Lewis and Clark.
But you're not going to want, Lewis and Clark's already an enormous elementary school.
Can we add to Madison? We probably can add to Madison. I mean, it's, that would take care of some of that. If that's, if that's what the board wants to do, we could, go ahead. We.
But if Lotus Academy is there, it could be used next year while we do something else and help with the crowdingness, I would think.
There's plenty of classrooms. You could, you could probably put Lotus Academy in the old Bowling Green Elementary where they got administrators to help watch them. Or, or help train them. No, I may, I mean, but they're, they're there. You'd have all those administrators between them and pre-K.
Mr., Mr. Forehand, so if I just may ask a question, Mr. Forehand, because this is, a lot of these are even more your constituents than mine. What is your solution for the, um, the elementary school issue that we're dealing with right now?
I don't, if I had a solution, I would have already said it weeks ago. I, I don't, I mean, the, the building that was being pursued, I was, I was leaning that way. And I had hoped that we could give them an answer, yea or nay, pursue it tonight, but that was the reason I brought it up. Now that that building is off the table, that kind of blows up all of our, all the short-term options involved that building. Uh, that's my recollection. And if that building is no longer an option, then.
I'm going to take my, I'm sorry.
Creative.
Yeah. Uh, I'm going to take my shot at this now in that I think we need, my, my vision is that we do enlargements now where we need, we'll always need the space. There's always something. I mean, we've got people asking us in different groups if we have more space in this building for things. The school said, do we have any empty rooms? We have a couple of closets. That's about it. So there's always a need for space and we're growing, but we have eighty-four plus acres right up where the middle school and the high school is. That's what former boards purchased years ago. If we're talking about building new schools, sizable schools in the future, as we have the funds to do it, uh, and can, can keep ourselves safe financially, then we need to look at that land. It makes sense to me that we keep things in the center of the county, that we need, keep it close to resources for emergency services. Not one side of the county or the other, and we don't have to buy that land. It's there. So if we're going to do an all-over requests for, for a, a growth study or an architectural rendering and recommendations, then I want the land we already own, that is already near the playgrounds, football field, the high school, the middle school. We need to look at that land and not split the county, but centralize everything. Um, and that's, that would be my suggestion. If we're going to look at growth in the future for new schools, which we know we will need, then we should look at keeping things centralized.
Madam Chair, I agree with your thought process. Um, the only thing that I would add to your comment is that we need, there is an emerging need. It's urgent that we do something and, and, and come with a reasonable, a, a reasonable solution that we can afford to do right now.
I agree.
With your comments in mind that when we plan further, that we take your comments in about where our growth should be in terms of the center of the county. And I'm sure there's going to be some, but that's down the road. I'm, I'm just trying to get to some, something immediate.
Right. We need something.
I'd like to have an immediate solution and then the school board kicks it back to me. You know, I made some comments in the first meeting about, I thought they could do this, thought they could do that. It really isn't. I, I guess maybe sometimes we do speak out of turn. It's their decision, but I wanted to give them something to chew on. And I think here it gives them an opportunity to have something to chew on again. And we present something that's reasonable, something that we can afford to do immediately, does not put the county in any bad financial position, does not hurt the taxpayers, does not, uh, encroach greatly on the taxpayers. And it solves an immediate, gives us immediate solution.
And it's something, and it's something we could probably afford to do right now.
Yes, we need to start digging because it's going to be hard to find that little genie lamp.
Yes.
You've got five hundred and something square miles to find that genie.
I'm looking.
To give us those three wishes.
I'm looking.
But the first step is to move forward with, with the request to put out an RFP for architectural design. And I would assume that there is a specialty out there somewhere that would advise us on space and use and that type of thing and what is possible. I would think they would hopefully have somebody in their office that could, could look at the whole thing. But we're not going to be able to do this with a wave of a magic wand because we don't have it. People don't have those pockets. I know, I know, but we need to do what we need to do to survive the next couple of years. And I think we start with getting an architect to look at the issue and, um, you know, coming up with plans and prices so we could start moving forward.
Madam Chairman, that's why I say, um, not to cut you off in please, I don't, I don't want to do that. Um, that's why I say that after talking to Mr. Cully and talking about our fund balance, we're in good shape with the fund balance and have money that we can spend one time. Where we get into trouble is when we keep borrowing money out of the fund, using it for operations. So we have the funds to do the things that we're talking about right now, one time, which will not put us in any bad situation and small projects we can do.
Right. You're not talking about.
It won't hurt. We will not hurt the taxpayers. And then we also have new businesses coming online that will, again, hopefully allow us to maybe in a year or two, take a look at reducing some of the rev- of taxes that we ask our citizens to bear. And it will be borne by the businesses.
And, and I agree. And that's what I, I was trying to say is eventually.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll have a centralized area with new buildings, but we can't do that on this. We can't do this right now, but we can do the, the extensions and the growth.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Black.
Is it possible that we do, um, like an architect, what the schools did is because the schools had option A, B, C, D. Um, and then they come up with, um, in, in the next couple of months or, um, here's, here's what your options are for a short-term. Uh, just because of the fact that, you know, they may see something or they may have suggestions for us that, um, I mean, us sitting up here, I'm not an expert. I'm not an architect expert. I mean, we can say that we know what the solution is and I think I have an idea and, you know, Mr. Thomas thinks he is, but, um, the, uh.
I actually am.
Yeah, right. Well, the, the bottom line though is I'd like a, a firm, I'd like a firm or someone to say, hey, look, here's, here's the short-term. Here's what you can do over the next, here's a three-year solution until you build your next school. Uh, because.
I think.
Yeah, go for it.
Well, I just, the, the long, short-term. Well, I just, the, the long, short term, long term plan that we got from schools, I thought was good and, and thoughtful and honestly, right on the money. But the parameters have changed and I think if we can go back to that same vendor, I mean, they've already done the research on what's available and.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with that, but we need to figure out something pretty quickly for the short term.
That's, that's what we're doing now.
But he's talking about rather than saying the same verb.
Yeah, but the thing is, all the short term options that were on that paper are gone.
Right, right. And, and this is a new short term option that wasn't on that paper that we just briefly mentioned.
I would welcome her coming down. I, I think we, we have to at, at least get that going.
Yes, I agree with you.
Dr. Kaverick, I have a motion on the floor. You're going to sit down until I recognize you. Thank you, ma'am. Chris, I need you. All right. Uh, we have a motion, correct, for Mr. Underwood to move forward with our, with, with a request for an architect. Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, move forward with an architect to, to do the, the Bowling Green, the, um, middle school and the bus garage and Dawn, those four things. So that is on the table right now. So should we, um, so I am appropriate, I, I am proper at this time to say, do we have a second? And go ahead and vote on that?
You, you can, I mean, we've had discussion on it.
We can add to it later.
Have more discussion after a second. I think we got a motion, but then we didn't get a second for, for the motion. So, and there's, if there's any more discussion on that, we can make that, but I think staff still needs clarity on whether you want to go forward with that RFP now with the, with adding the proviso that the funding is not yet appropriated. And, and I want to make clear that it's not funding to build whatever it needs to be built. It's funding to pay the architect for the services.
Paying for design.
For those additional.
Well, go ahead.
Actually, we're voting to send out the RFP. We don't have a price, so we don't know the money.
Right, well, so that, and that's what I want to clarify is that this art, the RFP that's in your packet is for architectural services for the Dawn Community Center. And we estimated that it's going to cost two twenty five for them to do that. So we, that's money and we have an appropriation for that. Then we have, we have a motion on the floor that says we'd like to expand the scope of work in the RFP uh, to include four other items, but we don't have the funds appropriated for that additional work the architect would be doing. So we have three options in my mind. You, to proceed with Mr. Thomas's motion and add that additional scope of work. We either need to bring that RFP back to you next month with the supplemental appropriation expanded or issue the RFP, you know, immediately with the proviso that we've not yet appropriated funds for this.
First of all, I'm going to say, I second Mr. Thomas's motion, and I do think we need to keep all four together. So I think we need to bring it back. This is my suggestion. Bring it back at the next meeting with, with the appropriated funds to do all four projects.
And now, can I give another option?
Yes, sir.
That we increase the appropriation to six hundred thousand dollars, knowing that it might be a little fluffy. And that should get us much closer, if not across the finish line for those services. We can do that now, we can have everything go out this week.
I think we could do that.
I mean, that's the, that's the other option.
That's why, so.
Mr. Forehand, I, I value your input here.
Well, I mean, I, I have, I would defer to you as to what this is going to cost. I mean, that seems like more than ample to cover it, but I, I don't, I don't know for sure without talking Mr. Sheeble, but.
My only concern would be if the price is known, then we're certainly not going to bid under it, but.
But that's, that's, that's for architectural services, that's not to actually build it.
Right.
And, and Mr. McKenzie, I, I, I know this used to be the law, but in Virginia, you couldn't issue an RFP unless you had funds to pay for it. It used to be the case, right? Is that still the case?
I, my understanding is, it, I don't know of a law that prohibits doing that, but it would, it would be very problematic if, if, obviously, if we have someone submit a bid and then we can't pay them for the contract that they put a bid in. So I think, I don't know off the top of my head of, of a statute, but I think it would be best practices to operate as if that is the law.
But that's, that's an awarded contract, not a RFP.
Well, we certainly can't award a contract if we don't have the funding to pay for it. Yes, sorry if I misunderstood you, yeah.
All right. So what, what, what we're saying is we're going to, we're going to estimate it six hundred thousand, just like we estimated it was two hundred and some thousand. So if I, if I modify my motion to increase the appropriation to six hundred thousand.
That's, that's a separate item.
This is, this is two A we're supposed to be doing, so.
Yes.
So I'm going to, I'm going to modify my motion to say, increase the appropriation to six hundred thousand and include, include the items we just discussed.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay. And, and now, so now you're in discussion. So Madam Chair, if you want to hear from the superintendent during discussion, you're welcome to, that's procedurally appropriate.
Do you mind if we hear, I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
And that's from the undesigned general fund balance.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor, do you want, who goes, did you want to speak as courtesy to a former board member?
Good evening. I do want to begin by thanking you for having continued conversation on this critical topic. So I very much appreciate the dialogue. I do have a number of factual pieces of information that you may find beneficial, but the first is relevant to your motion. So I will throw that out there and then turn to Mr. McKenzie to see if it even is a viable option for the Board of Supervisors to entertain. And that is that we already have a fully vetted RFP with seven architectural engineering firms that have been approved. I'm not certain if that's something that you could ride on, but it could be a cost saving measure for you. And those are readily accessible at this time. And so I wanted you to have that piece of information in case that is something that's advantageous, um, either for the Dawn project or the combination that has been referenced this evening. So that is the first piece that I thought may require some additional dialogue. Um, and then in relation to some other facts, I can pause and hold those until after this motion is cared for, or I can share those at this time. Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Before you get started, can I ask you, you said you have seven contracts with architects.
We have seven vetted A and E vendors that have already gone through the RFP process that we can call upon for any type of, um, project that we are entertaining.
Design and build, or one of the other?
Um, I'll turn to Marsha. I know the design is included, but I'm uncertain in relation to the building component.
Dr. Kaverick.
You can just yell from there.
While you're waiting for, for Marsha, would you, so these are ones that you all have checked their credentials on?
Oh, absolutely. They've fully gone through the proper channels.
Contracted with you.
No.
That you talked to, looking for that.
Absolutely. And I'll, and Mrs. Stevens can certainly, um, provide additional details because she spearheaded that process.
Thank you.
I understand that.
We typically do write our, um, RFPs each with cooperative language. Each of those RF, or each of the A and Es were in certain areas. So some of them are just, um, erosion control, et cetera. So they all have their own network. Some of them are even installing turf. So A and E is across the board, design, construction, um, groundwork, et cetera. So we can certainly look into those specific ones, um, as you would like.
Just wanted that to be out there as you're talking about increasing the dollar amount. That may be a cost savings that you may be interested in. Um, and again, the cooperative language is in there. So it is something that if there is something feasible, you could potentially ride on. Um, another point that I did want to make is in relation to the bus garage. We're greatly appreciative of any conversation that is supportive of expansion or new build. Um, we did, of course, follow up from our joint meeting where that was a small topic of conversation and an expansion that included three bays, some tunneling work that would operationalize the current bays at a higher level, which would allow, um, work underneath vehicles. Um, and the deferred maintenance cost of that building is four point two million dollars for the transportation expansion. So just wanted you to have, and of course, you would have the opportunity to, to adjust according to what you saw as appropriate in conjunction with conversation with our staff. In relation to moving preschool to Lotus Academy, um, or formerly known as CT Smith or Lady Smith Elementary, we presented you with a pretty extensive overview of that building that noted that it is been deemed poor condition and that it would cost eight, over eighty six percent, um, to renovate that building to code standards of a new build. So we're looking, I think, off the top of my head, as I did not come prepared with those documents, it was approximately ten to eleven million dollars to renovate that building. You cannot simply lift the five Lewis and Clark classrooms and move them over to Lotus Academy. There is no operational kitchen. And we're already moving twenty five breakfast and lunch, um, meals from Lewis and Clark over to service Lotus Academy every day. And we would not be equipped to add in an additional hundred meals, both in the morning and the afternoon, and to maintain service provisions that are outlined in Head Start and VPI criteria. So while that suggestion has been made, um, please know that that is not a viable option unless we do a significant monetary investment into that aging infrastructure. Um, I did want to make note, um, we also followed up on Mr. Sealy's suggestion in relation to Bowling Green Elementary. Mr. Caldwell, our supervisor of maintenance, pulled, um, what we have on file in relation to the old plans that did not occur during that renovation period prior to, to my tenure. And the plans actually identify two additional classrooms, not six plus a gymnasium. So I just wanted to share that with you, that those plans would not be relevant, we'd have to draw up new plans. But I also did want to share that our school board does not view that as a viable option. That is our most at promise population. They're already serving eight hundred and fifty students and we do not believe that, uh, creating six classrooms times twenty five students would be a right size for that population. And our preference would be that we visit Louisa County and take a look at their, um, learning cottage communities, um, which have been, um, created with architectural sensitivity. We also met with the HOA board at Lady Smith Village. They were extremely supportive of us placing learning cottage communities on the property with the understanding that a new build would be in the future of an elementary school that would help address their crowding, overcrowding. And they have their attorney drawing up a document for us noting that that would be permitted with the architectural sensitivity, um, being a component of the planning of those learning cottages or trailers being placed. Um, they want to just make sure that we're sensitive to, um, the, um, community that, um, is home based there in Lady Smith Village.
So Dr. Kaverick, everybody can cringe at the word trailers, but a cottage trailer is something different?
Well, no, ma'am. It's just a softer term to call the, the same, um, classroom something more palatable. So learning cottage community, though, when clustered and planned by an architectural firm, um, and Louisa County's community actually, um, is a temporary, um, bridge plan to a new build. And it actually was completed by the architectural firm that we have been working in conjunction with, um, RRMM. And so they have graciously offered to tour anyone that would like to go there. We know that trailers, learning cottages run approximately a hundred thousand dollars to purchase. And we do believe that while we aren't able to operationalize the options we presented with building P, we believe that this might be the second best route. While not ideal, it does permit all students to remain on campus rather than having to outfit other spaces um, and spend money on facilities that we feel are aging infrastructure and would not be a, a wise long-term investment. Um, it would allow the preschool students to stay on campus, still have access to art, music, PE library. It would allow early childhood special education to remain in-house and access many of the services that are indeed right there in their homeschool. So that will be a new option that's being built. We hope to have another joint meeting with you and share those data points and a, a rendering of what that may look like for Bowling Green and Lewis and Clark. And that would, of course, address cultural, or excuse me, the, um, architectural sensitivity that the HOA pointed out as being critical.
Well, we will talk about this in a work session, but sort of what I'm hearing is that you want to spend a hundred thousand dollars a cottage until you get a new school and then we have to pay for the new school, plus we have hundred thousand dollar cottages sitting out there. So are they resellable?
Yes, ma'am, they are. As a matter of fact, Stafford is in the process right now of selling forty to fifty trailers. And we have plans to sit with them and talk about what a purchase may look like and what the conditions of those, those cottages are currently in to determine if that is a plan that we could proceed forward with. But we do know the investment short term is more feasible than putting six classrooms onto Bowling Green, which at an increased square footage cost is about three million dollars. So we felt like that, in addition to still having deferred maintenance and still having many other things that we needed to operationalize, might be the best plan since what we have brought forward does not appear to be viable at this moment.
Mr. Thomas?
Dr. Calverick, you said the, the kitchen was gone in the old Lady Smith?
Absolutely.
Ms. Allison's daycare is in there. What are they using for a kitchen?
The students bring their, the children that attend that bring their own meals.
Okay. Because they're in the side where the cafeteria was, right?
They, yes, they are. And the community theater is really in the space where the cafeteria was at this time. But they do not have a working kitchen in that, that facility.
And they rent space from the school board?
They do. Not only is Ms. Allison's daycare there, but we have the Caroline Community Theater, the Sheriff's Office, Parks and Rec, Lotus Academy.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
There is an operating kitchen at Bowling Green Elementary Old, correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, I did not mention Bowling Green Elementary. We could temporarily consider moving Head Start over, um, but we would need to just look at the parameters associated with that requirement. It would be all the preschool coming over. So while it was only two classrooms before, it would be five this time. And we would have to, of course, um, bunk up in terms of central office staff, which is something that we could certainly accommodate on the short term. Um, but all of those are options that we are happy to bring back to you since our last meeting that we're currently working on before we move full steam ahead with, with other options that may be more costly. That's why I was so interested in coming to the podium. I didn't, didn't want a, a decision to be made tonight that may not be necessary in this moment. If we could have time to come back together and have great dialogue with one another, we may be able to come up with a temporary plan. But it doesn't address deferred maintenance, which is something we still cannot overlook.
But if we, if we did the kitchen, if we did the kitchen at the old Lady Smith.
Hold on, we're getting some feedback or something.
That's somebody's, that's somebody's microphone. Mine won't either now. What you got? All right, but Dr. Calverick, before I forget, in the midst of the static, we can still talk. Um, we would have to, we would have to redo the kitchen.
Testing one, two, three.
Dave, are we, I didn't even think about the recording not going on, I'm sorry. I kept going, but we're recording now, we're okay? All right, very good. So, thank you very much for the information, and we'll get together for a work session, but in the meantime, we've got to deal with what we've got now, so we're going to go ahead with the RFP.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Mr. McKeever?
For the record, we've got a motion and a second. It's been amended, and it's for the original RFP with four additions, is that right? Four total, three additions, you want me to, let's recite them just for the record.
Dawn Community Center. The bus garage, the bus garage actually is owned by the county. So the bus garage, classrooms at the old Lady Smith Elementary, we probably need to look at the kitchen also, the old Bowling Green Elementary, and to expand the current Bowling Green Elementary, because that seems to be the easiest one to do right away. Is that it?
No.
What was the last one, Mr. Thomas?
The middle school was on the short and the long-term plan.
Expand the current Bowling Green Elementary using a knockout wall, and middle school additions, I did have that, but you said four, that's five.
And if, what additions? If trailers are short-term, then that, and building a school, there's no point in doing both.
I agree.
Bowling Green, right.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't, we didn't want to do trailers, and now we want to do trailers. I don't know.
And just whatever is going to go on the scope of work for the architectural services contract.
Right.
Right, so the trailers aren't included in the architectural, so, so we've got Dawn, we've got the bus maintenance shop, we have old Lewis Lady Smith Elementary.
Nope, no we.
And what's the fourth one?
Old Bowling Green Elementary.
Old Bowling Green Elementary.
Expand Bowling Green, the current Bowling Green Elementary. And I believe we were adding on the middle school additions as part of the architect's plan.
Can I ask a question?
That makes five.
Mrs. Black?
Yes, Mr. Black.
Repeating what Mr. Forehand said, like, why would we, I mean, the middle school expansion, that's going to be kind of a short and long-term, but why would we go out and do anything with Bowling Green or Lotus Academy if they're okay with learning cottages until we get a new elementary school? Because the new elementary school is going to be, so the learning cottages, to me, would be, when you look at Lotus Academy, you're going to have to do a significant amount of work in there, and to me, if you put, if they're a hundred thousand dollars each and you have to put six to ten, I mean, that's cheaper than having to renovate what you're going to have to do at Lotus. I mean, it's a cheaper option, so why would we put an RFP over the elementary schools if the learning cottages are the cheaper way to go until we get the elementary school?
Are we sure it's the cheaper way to go? I don't know. The other thing is, the kitchen is still an issue. No matter what you do. We're not talking about Lotus Academy, it's not on here, we dropped that idea. It's, but they've all got the same problem.
Lotus Academy doesn't.
Yeah, it's whatever Mr. Thomas's motion is, is what we're voting on. And so, that's what I was just trying to ascertain, is what is your motion and second?
One more time, you want me to repeat it again, or?
Let me take a pass.
Okay.
And see if, so, Dawn is the original, bus garage, old Lady Smith Elementary, old Bowling Green Elementary, expand current Bowling Green Elementary, CMS addition. This is the motion.
What is CMS?
Caroline Middle.
Okay, so.
So that's the motion and the second. And then, Dr. Calverick pointed out that they have a cooperative procurement with other architects. I think that we can look at that in parallel with your RFP, and we can compare them.
All right, can you give me the buildings one more time?
Yes. So, the additions are bus garage, old Lady Smith Elementary, old Bowling Green Elementary, expand current Bowling Green Elementary.
And the room, we're talking the room on the back of the middle school, okay?
And then Caroline Middle School addition.
Right.
And then, and then the one other change is increase the appropriation to six-hundred thousand to pay for the additional architectural services that would come along with these additional pieces of work. So that's the motion, and that's the second that's on the floor, if I'm understanding correctly.
All right, so we've had it repeated, is there any further discussion?
In lieu of the information from the superintendent, I'd like to trim that down to three, me and the middle school, the bus garage, and the Dawn building. Because I think if cottages keeps everyone on one site, we have one kitchen, there's no busing, no logistical issues, we can make it good, we have an opportunity to buy them used possibly, there's a lot of pros now that that's on the table for our short-term solutions. And if we go to any of the, either of the two, we're going to have to do, especially Lady Smith Elementary, the restroom facilities have to be in the classroom. You don't have a playground for three- and four-year-olds that's approved, you don't have a kitchen, you know, there's a lot, I mean, you're talking about enormous amount of investment just to make it serviceable for a couple of years. I don't, honestly, I think that's enough to take it off the list right now.
Well, I am confused, because I think of the old Lady Smith Elementary, that's where all their offices are now, and yes, they.
No, that's old Bowling Green.
That's old Bowling Green.
Right.
Okay.
Old Lady Smith Elementary is at Lotus, right? I mean, that's.
Is that the Lotus? Oh, you got to call it Lotus Academy, my kids didn't go there, so I didn't know. Okay. Y'all try and confuse me. Okay. Yeah, I think Lotus Academy, I think we, I agree, I think we could, can take, could take out.
We can just disposition, we can vote on the motion, and then if it fails, then we come back for round two.
All right, so.
That might be the cleanest thing to do.
All right, so, the Dawn bus garage, or whatever you want to call it, the old middle school, and the Bowling Green Elementary addition, right? Four, we took out Lotus Academy.
Well, it's not in the motion.
No, all right. All right, so we have motion and a second. Mr. Black?
Nay.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand? I am, nay.
Aye.
And I will consider, and so the motion fails, I will consider further discussion because I think I need a slightly better idea, and so, how about a ten-minute break, and then we come back and hit this one more time? Is that, do I have a second to that? Everybody okay? All right, we're in recess, thank you.
I'm going somewhere by myself.
Point this meeting back to order. At this time, before we move on to anything else, I would like to move request that we reconsider the motion that just failed. And I voted no against it simply because I needed to figure out exactly what the motion was saying, and I'm not going to vote yes on something I wasn't sure of. And the word trailer really threw me. But I would like to reconsider the motion, which if I am correct, Mr. Thomas included Dawn, the bus garage, and the addition to the middle school as far as this architectural RP is concerned. Is that correct? Is that where we ended it?
The original motion had Dawn Bus Garage, classrooms at Old Lady Smith Classroom to Old Bowling Green, possibly expand the current Bowling Green Elementary site and middle school addition. That was the original motion.
But the final motion did not include all that.
That was the final motion.
That was the final motion. All right. All right. I thought we had taken something else.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Six hundred thousand dollars. All right.
And I'll second that. You need a second, I think.
She's reconsidering.
She's reconsidering, making a motion. You need somebody to second.
Yeah, so you need a second, and now it needs a vote.
Now we need a vote to reconsider.
Mr. Black?
Still no, just because of the fact that I don't think we need the elementaries if we're going to be doing the trailers, but that's me.
I vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Okay, so now you have brought the motion back for reconsideration. Okay, so you're just, you're back to where you started.
Right.
You're on Mr. Thomas's motion with Dawn Bus Garage, Old Lady Smith Elementary, Old Bowling Green Elementary, expand current Bowling Green Elementary, Caroline Middle Edition. You're back on that motion, back to, back to the first square.
Okay. Now, here we go again. So are we doing, count, count those for me, Chris. How many do you have that you, that this motion that was discussed would do?
Mr. Thomas's motion, lest, lest we forget that we started with Dawn, the recreation center. That's one. Two, Bus Garage.
Right.
Three, Old Lady Smith Elementary. Four, Old Bowling Green Elementary. Five, expand current Bowling Green Elementary. Six, Caroline Middle Edition. These are, these are the scope of work for an architectural services contract. And then the motion also said to pay for that additional architectural services, we're going to increase the appropriation to six hundred thousand.
Correct.
All right.
And to clarify.
We need a second now?
You, you do need a second, and this is just to get bids from architects. You can, you can decide that you found a better deal with the cooperative procurement for the school board. You can, you can move forward with some of those, all of those RPs that you, yeah, this is just to get the bids in.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Sealy?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank goodness. Move forward here.
Yes.
Yep. All right, at this time, we are at a public hearing. This is for the proposed calendar year 2025 tax rate.
Madam Chair, members of the board, as you said, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive comments from the public on the proposed tax rates for tax year 2025. This is not a public hearing on the proposed FY26 budget itself. There will be a separate public hearing held for that purpose at a later date. Before you open the public hearing, I wanted to clarify something about the, the notice in the real estate tax rate that's proposed. When you discuss this at your April 8th meeting, the board made a motion to authorize staff to advertise, advertise a two cent increase in the real estate tax rate. And during the meeting, an increase to 51 cents per $100 of assessed value was discussed based on an equalized rate of 49 cents. However, the public hearing notice and the, and the rates that we're considering tonight are for an equalized rate of 50 cents per $100 of assessed value and a two cent increase to 52 cents. The reason for that is because the, the public hearing notice that staff prepared on April 9th following the meeting, it required very specific language and information that must be included in it based on the code of Virginia. In particular, it required the county to determine and list how much the total assessed value of real property exceeds last year's total assessed value. And this is the key phrase, when additional assessments due to new constructions or improvements are excluded. We didn't have that, the, the total assessed value of real property used to calculate the 49 cents as an equalized rate during the April 8th discussion did not exclude the value of new construction from 2024. The notice, you, you also have to list the tax rate, which would levy the same amount of tax revenue as last year when multiplied by the new total assessed value, again with new construction excluded. So we, we backed out for the, the public hearing notice, we backed out the new construction value, which is approximately 133.8 million. And we determined at that point that the equalized rate is actually 50 cents per $100 assessed value, and therefore it obviously follows that a two cent increase is 52 cents. So with the new calculation, each penny now generates approximately 554,648 dollars. That's in your board packet memo, but I'll repeat that each penny, 540, 54,648 dollars, 554,648. All the other proposed rates are the same as 2024, except for those that are tied to the real estate rate, which is minerals tax, mobile homes, public service, corporations, real estate. And finally, as a reminder, tax rates are adopted on a calendar year basis, not a fiscal year basis. So that means that the rates that are adopted by the board will be in effect as of January 1 of '25, and they'll be applied to the real estate bill that's due in, in June of this year.
Mr. Parton, the value is also backtrack to that first of the year also?
Correct.
Mr. Parton, since you're taking questions now?
Yes, sir.
When do citizens actually receive their reassessment value? Does that just, that comes out with the tax bill?
That, there will be a notice mailed by Cowan Company that will be, that will be the notice, and then there will be an opportunity for hearings. Britain, back there. So.
May 10th is what?
We, we want to wait until after the rates are adopted so that there's accurate information. So if the rates are adopted tonight, Cowan will immediately work on getting it to the printer, getting notices printed, and then, and then out with the, with the hearing schedule. And, and citizens will receive letter.
Everybody. So we estimate that'll be in the next couple of weeks?
Yes.
But the reality is, at 50 cents, the average homeowner will pay the same amount of tax that he's paying theoretically, because some go higher, some go lower. Theoretically, at 50 cents, you're paying the same tax this year that you paid last year.
Correct, depending on where you fall in that average increase.
Right, right. But it, it should be close. And, and the two cent increase, I think represented 4.6% increase.
Sounds right, yeah.
So I think that was in Mr. Colley's thing before. So for every $1,000 that I'm paying in real estate tax now, I would be paying 46 more dollars per penny increase.
Yeah, we, I think we put some estimates based on home values in, in the, in the memo, and I checked both with Jason Cowan and with the commissioner's office about trying to come up with the, the median value, and it's somewhere in the $370,000 range. So I think we, we provided brackets between 300 and 400,000, and so that would, that would be the most representative, which was, I want to say was $218 more year and 288 maybe. It's in the, it's in the memo. I don't have it right in front of me, but.
300,000 times three, 4.6, 160.
216, and 216 for $300,000 home and 288 for $400,000. But that's, that's purely.
Average.
An illustration. I don't want anyone to think that's going to be right on the money. Thank you.
Any other questions before we open it up to public comment? Hearing none. If there is anyone in the audience who at this time would like to come forward to speak on this issue, you have three minutes, and you may come forward, state your name and your voting district. Not your address, don't know where you live, just your voting district, okay? So if there's anyone who would like to speak on, about the tax rate, and tax rate alone, come forward at this time, please.
Good evening, Chair Long. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I do not know how citizens are expected to make valid public comments on the proposed tax rate tonight, for we have not received our new property assessments. I have heard this board commending the appraisal group, but why is there always a glitch with so many of the companies the county contracts with? I also heard comments here from citizens stating there are errors, errors with the new GIS system. I firmly believe that a 63% increase in property values is skewed just as much out of proportion as our used car tax values became now with the, with personal property taxes. My home may be assessed at 80% over the prior amount. I don't know. It's 120 years old and greatly depreciated. It sits at the edge of a floodplain. One thing I do know is it is, it still will not be worth what the assessor says it is, nor are any homes worth this new inflated value. So it is an unfair handicap you are giving us. All I can do is bargain with you to please set the rate as low as possible in order to balance the budget, and importantly, make wise decisions on how you spend our hard-earned money. I am so tired of the school board coming up to this podium at every meeting, asking for more of our, my tax dollars when they already receive appropriations from the state. I resent it because I have worked hard and struggled all my life and managed my money wisely to own my home in possessions. Perhaps the school board needs to direct their focus that their problems are more caused by mismanagement of their own funds and resources and not keep looking at we taxpayers for handouts. My children are proud adult graduates of the Caroline system, when Mr. Underwood touched on at the last meeting. None of us needed a castle, and many great minds came from the Caroline that had pride and knew how to work and make the best use of what they had. I'm retired, and no one in my circumferential Woodford neighborhood have children in public schools. The few there are are homeschooled, so we demand very little, fortunately, in the way of services from the county. None of us are chasing after elusive riches, riches from data centers, and we are willing to pay our, our fair share for needed facilities that protect our public health and safety and quality of life. Nor are we county outliers, pickleball players, or want data centers. You already raised our taxes one cent last year when in actuality, there was a surplus of money. So I urge you tonight, please settle on the rockbonnet number tax rate. I bargain for under 50%, but I maintain if, if that's not a valid basis to set our real estate tax rate, please go as low as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time?
That's okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I too, sorry, I probably will repeat some things that Mrs. Hodge just said, but I apologize.
Excuse me, Paula, you're, you were in the Bowling Green District, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Yes, I'm in the Bowling Green District. I apologize again for saying that.
That's all right.
For not including that. I have several questions for y'all. My very first question is, how can y'all set a tax rate when the citizen has not even received their assessments? I am a person that, I sit at my table with my right hand with my old assessment. I sit at my table with my left hand with my new assessment. I sit there and do figures before I want to know how much I'm going to pay or what is approved. I can't do that, because I don't have it. I don't have it. Next, I'm retired senior, grew up in this county, and I just shared with the school board superintendent here. I went to Caroline High School, right across the road here. Best school in the world when I went there. I don't understand why it's such an issue with the assessment this time. I just don't understand. I've lived it a lot of years. As I said, born and raised here, went to school here. I'm a retired senior now. I can't keep paying increases with taxes and assessments. These papers I got here with me that I printed, Mr. Part knows what I'm talking about. I assume y'all have them. I printed this, I think it's five pages here. That is the hardest reading I've ever read. I found it very hard to read those pages and understand it. I'm going to refer to the one page here that, that's the top. It says, Caroline County Board of Supervisors notes public hearing on proposed real property tax increase and proposed tax rates for 2025. County of Caroline proposes to increase property tax levies. Number one, assessment increase total assessed value of real property excluding additional assessments due to new construction. Understand? Exceeds last year's. assessments due to new construction, understand, exceeds last year's total assessed value of real property by 60.37%. I know ain't no property values increase no 60.37%. That is unreal. Then down here, it says, individual property taxes may, understand that too, however, understand that too, increase at a percentage greater than or less than the above percentage. This tells me nothing. It's scary.
Yep, I'll give you 15, 15 more seconds.
But anyway, I hope y'all will think of the citizens. And again, I don't think y'all should vote on a rate because we don't have it in our hands to read and study. I know I don't. Oh, and my last question, are you going to allow me the amount of time that your contractor took to do the assessment to pay my taxes? Two weeks extension is not enough. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. All right, board, time for comments.
Madam Chair. Mr. Parton, or?
I'll catch you next.
Is there, I don't know, you or, or maybe the, the finance director might be able to tell us, or maybe even Mr. Bassoon, since he's there, but the normal process after reassessment was to mail out the, the new assessed value before we did the tax rate? Or did they all get mailed out at the same time?
Well, I mean, keep in mind, we're, as you know, three months behind.
Right, right. But, but, but I mean, I'm, I'm saying, five years ago, and I really don't remember. So that's why I thought Mr. Bassoon might help us, but five years ago, or four years ago, last time we did reassessment, did we get a letter from the assessor that says, your $100,000 property is now worth 150,000?
Yes, sir.
And that was it? Right? And then we came back and we set the tax rate, we had numbers we could, we could actually measure?
Yes, sir. So in a normal general reassessment, they contract with the county, they normally will wrap up by December 31st or earlier. Normally, it's in the November timeframe.
Right.
Before Thanksgiving, that way, they have time to send the notices, work their numbers, dump it into our system, then we work with county admin and say, here's your numbers, here's what happened, blah, 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 and then bring it for the board, and y'all set the rates, normally around April of the following year.
Yeah.
And then we go to work, get it to the treasurer's office in time so that she can have the amount of time, by law, 14 days to get it to the folks for the first half and second half.
Actually mail the bills out.
Yes, sir. This year wasn't a little bit of an anomaly because we went with that 90-day extension due to various reasons. I can't speak for the general reassessor as to his workload and whatever, but we did go to the new software, which in turn was a very good plus with lots of different features. As you all discussed prior with other software systems, every software system has some different interfacing issues and stuff, and we're working through that. And that team is Johnny on the spot when I call the owner of the company and say, I need this now, not in 24 hours. So they're, they are responsive. So with all of that being said, with the 90-day pushout, everything else gets pushed out. Now, because Caroline County is a twice-a-year billing, we have to be very careful on if we can get things done on time to get first half bills out. I think the penalty and interest has already been extended to the June 23rd.
Yeah. But, but the reality is, as, as the two speakers have said, normally, they could sit at their table and, and have one bill and have another bill, and see what they paid in the past, and estimate what they're going to pay in the future. And now that, that opportunity is not there due to the fact that the assessor was, needed a 90-day extension, he got that 90-day extension, and now we're behind doing a process we don't normally do.
Yes, sir. We're out of, we're out of our normal process, exactly.
Okay, so the only recourse that anybody has at this point in time, which is still really the same, is, is they could go to the, to the Board of Equalization and say, my $100,000 house is not worth 150,000, it's really only worth 120, and that'll affect their rate, or what they pay.
Well, that's true.
Not true, Mr., no, it'll, it'll affect what they pay, not their rate.
No. If, when, if, if I, Madam Chairman.
Who am I starting with?
When the taxpayer looks at what we're doing tonight, we've given them the amount of the tax rate to pay the exact same amount of money they paid last year. So when you look at your tax bill, we're saying 50 cents this year was the same as you paid 70 something cents last year. Equalized, equalized 78. The question is, do we increase from the equalized rate, the same rate, do we increase that 2 cents to 50?
But that's, that's true.
So their, their bill is the same until we change the tax rate.
Theoretically, their bill is the same at 50, at 50 cents.
At 50 cents.
But, but your house went up 70%, my house went up 30%.
Right.
I theoretically should pay less at 50 cents, and you should theoretically pay more.
It's on the average.
That 50, 50 cents is the average.
That's right.
And, and what, what the citizens that came forward are basically saying, not speaking for themselves, but if I had spoke, I'd be saying the same thing, I don't know how much.
Exactly.
And that average, my assessment is.
I get you, okay.
So how can I vote for 52 cents? I might vote for 52 cents if my house only went up 30%. You, but I don't know that, thank you, Nan. But, but the point is, they would normally, under a normal tax year, they would already know what their reassessment was before we got to tonight.
But we would set, we would set.
We would set 50 cents no matter what, because that's our equalized rate.
Correct.
Everybody would have 50 cents as their tax rate.
Correct.
Regardless of whether your value went up or down.
But I.
We're voting on the tax rate.
But, but again, the point is, at 50 cents, I don't know if I pay more or less.
Right, you don't.
You don't know if you pay more or less.
I don't.
The average.
I know the average.
The average person.
But I have no control over that.
But I think that's what they're saying they wanted to know. And, and normally, they would know, this is, this is a year because the reassessor took so long to get his work done, we're now caught in the crunch, and everybody's caught in the crunch.
I agree with that.
Because of where we are. And, you know, I don't like it either, so I'm going to vote for 50 cents whenever we get to it.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Just, just in, in following up with what you had started to say about the appeal process, please understand, the appeal process stands the same way as it would have been done, you know, in prior years. You know, they will have the opportunity to appeal with the Cowan Company. Those will come to us if there are any changes. We are baiting this sup, supplement, you know, based upon the changes. Then when that's done, they'll meet with the Board of Equalization. If there are changes there, we'll abate and sup when that time comes too. So if people, if, if any citizen has a concern and there is any changes made, the billing will work either, either way, no matter what.
Ms. Long.
Mr. Forehand.
What is the driver to get this done tonight versus?
Because the, the bills need to go out, the treasurer needs to be able to send the bills out, there's a, a requirement by law that at a minimum, she has to get the bills mailed two weeks before they're due. We're, we're already probably going to come back and, at the next meeting and ask that the, you've already extended the, the penalties and interest, zero penalties and interest until June 23rd, probably going to come back at the next meeting and ask that you actually move the June 5th due date to the 23rd to match it. But the driver is, the, the Commissioner's Office needs to know the, the rate to complete the bills, do the work to get the information to the treasurer, and then the treasurer has to get the bills out and mailed at least two weeks in advance of when they're due.
And do we have an estimate on when the assessments are coming out?
At, once the, once the tax rates are set, the Cowan Company will, will immediately start sending the, send it to the printer to, to, to get the notices out. So what did, do you remember what, how long, you said, you said maybe a week?
I got my assessments.
And then they will be mailed out, and it will have the information, including the dates for hearings to, to appeal the assessment with, with Cowan.
So, so Cowan's waiting on the tax rate to be set before they publish their values?
Yes, because otherwise, he would, he would have to publish the current rate of 78 cents.
Why is he publishing a rate? He's just still on the.
Because the law requires it, in his, in his, there's a specific language and format that he has to follow by the Code of Virginia, and then his, his notification of the reassessed rates.
Okay. I'm just, I, I own proppin' in different, different jurisdictions. I remember getting those several months ago, but that's because we're, we're delayed 90 days. Okay.
But our real problem is, Mr. Forehand, is that if, if we don't set a tax rate, he's going to send the bills out with the 78 cent tax rate. Everybody's going to see that and go, what? Because the values are so much higher. So in order to prohibit that from happening, we need to set a tax rate that enables him to send out a tax bill that shows the realized rate.
Madam Chair, that, that does not coincide with what Mr. Bassoon just said. We, four years ago, we sent out the assessment, right? Before we set the tax rate.
The letter went out, yes.
The letter, wait, wait, let's make sure I understand. The letter that says your property was assessed at X dollars.
Yes, that goes out in prior, way before you all would set the rate in around April of the following year.
So why can't that letter go out now?
Because it, it could, but exactly what Mr. Sealy said, it would go out with a rate of 78 cents, which we all know the rate's not going to be anywhere near that.
But that's, but that's not the same. And, and I, I got to make sense, because if I sent a, if I sent a letter out four years ago that said, your $100,000 house is now worth $150,000, no tax rate was listed on it.
So what Jason Cowan explained to us, if the governing body doesn't set a rate, and the letters must go out, he has to advertise on the notice the current rate, which is .0078 on 100, and that would make it confusing. So we are in a really peculiar situation, everyone, every citizen, you all, everyone here, because we have the numbers, we have the revalidation file, we're ready, we're going to, we're going to get that going, but we don't know the rate, he doesn't know the rate, but the citizens don't know the values. So this is a, a little bit of a mismatch this year due to the extension.
But, but Mark, this is not sounding like it was four years ago.
It, it's not.
But, okay.
It's certainly not.
But suppose the, the reassessor got everything done in December, when would I get the letter that says my $100,000 house is now worth 150?
He should have been wrapped up before Thanksgiving, and you would have got your letter in December.
And in December, that letter would have just said, my house is worth 150,000. It wouldn't have said anything about the tax rate, right?
I think by law, he has to advertise the equalizing.
But see, that's not, that, that can't be right.
No, no, no. The law says an equalized rate must be advertised, not the adopted rate, the way the code reads, not the adopted rate, the equalized rate. In this particular case, if there's, there.
Four years ago? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's no rate.
It would be the present.
It would be the present.
Wait, 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 wait.
Mr. Underwood, let, let them go first.
I said that wrong. I did say that wrong. In years past, we wouldn't have to put the equalized rate on there.
So is this a new law, or?
No, this is a law that's kicked in due to the extension.
So what? How is it possible to send out a notice in January with no rate? And now you tell me I must send out a rate?
Right.
In April?
Here's the thing, this is a question for the company to answer. I don't want to go down a rabbit hole and say the wrong thing.
I don't think we need to talk to them anymore after this.
Yeah, because we don't, the Commissioner's Office doesn't handle that, and we're not in that. We're, I'm just going based off of what's happening this year. Years prior, when everything clicked, it worked. That's all I can say.
I think what happened, I think what happened. Yes, sir.
By law, when do we have to have the tax notices to the public?
You, you, the treasurer has to send out, has to mail the, the tax bills at least 14 days in advance of when they're due.
So we, so don't, so don't we determine, don't we have the ability to determine when they're due?
Yes.
So, so, so if we don't vote tonight, and you say, well, you're going to be past the 23rd, we could move it to July 15th.
You could, right.
So.
But the problem is, you're, you're into a new fiscal year then.
And nobody, and nobody has the reassessment letter, so they still don't know how much their, their tax went up. That's the problem. I think, Mark, you said something that, that said the, the equalized rate being on this letter was kicked in by the extension? Because we provided an extension to pay their bill, now we're under some new restriction?
Not a restriction, it was an agreement made between the county and the company that those, that information be put on the letter. The State Code of Virginia says the only people that's supposed to really be posting that are people who do assessments two years and less. So this was done as a courtesy, to be honest, to the citizens.
So because we did a courtesy, now they're in the dark? Right?
Due to the time constraint.
That's a little harsh, but that's the reality. Okay.
I, I can't speak to past practices, but we talked about the law a little bit here, so let me jump in a little bit on that, because I think one of the issues we may be having is, is kind of a terminology issue, is that, you know, the, the document that we're talking about now is the notice of reassessment. And there are statutes that apply to what information has to go in that notice reassessment. If, if in years past, some kind of courtesy letter went out that just said, this is your new assessment, but this isn't your notice of reassessment, this is just a courtesy or something, I don't know about that, but the, the notice of reassessment under the statute has to contain some kind of tax rates and calculate, based on this assessment, this is what your, the tax levy is. And the statute goes through whether or not the new rate that applies to that assessment has been set. If the new rate that applies to that assessment has been set, you put it in there. So I think if you were to vote tonight on a new rate, the notice of reassessment would go out, and it would say, this is what your tax levy is. If that rate hasn't been set, so you don't vote on that tonight, then the statute says, if the tax rate that will apply to the new assessed value has not been established, then the notice shall set out the time and place, the next meeting of the local governing body, at which the public testimony will expect it on the tax rate changes. So you'd have to give notice of that, and then you would include what the tax rate has been historically for the past two years, 78% at 78, sorry, 78 cents, and calculate it based on that. I think the concern is, if someone gets that tax, that, someone gets that notice of, of reassessment, that's going to be a very large tax bill that, that they won't realistically have to pay. So again, and now because of the time constraints with the delay with vision and all those things, the courtesy letter, whether or not it happened in the past or not, is that that ship has sailed. The, the notice of assessments need to go out. So, so that, that's, that's what the statute says, as far as, and I just wanted to kind of try to help clarify about terminology.
So I think this board needs to create a policy that says the courtesy letter should always go out after reassessments.
Yeah.
To let people at least know what their, their proposed, their assessed, their new assessed value is.
Their new assessed value is.
Right.
Without.
It's not saying anything about the tax rate, because staff had to have time to figure out what the equalized rate was, but we should have at least informed people that their house had gone up in value, whatever. But we should have at least informed people that their house had gone up in value, whatever percent.
There's not a flat percentage for everybody is because properties differ.
Right.
But we certainly can look or put it on another agenda to say that we want just the appraisals to go out. When, when we have reassessments, which is only how many years?
Well, but by law, it's either five or six. It's, you have to do it. It's up to the board, the frequency.
But we're probably going to have to change that frequency because that long a period of time is killing us.
Yep. Yeah.
It is just killing us. That's why, if you look at 20% a year or 15% a year over four years, you're at 60%, you're at 60% then.
Yeah, because we're only doing every five and it's because we're under 60,000. That's the, I got, I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Black.
I just have a question. If you look at the, I was looking at Virginia statute here on the equalized rate. And every single one of those, so like the, you see like the house assessed value of 2024, and maybe you said this already and I wasn't paying attention. But the tax rate was 1,000, you know, for, for our, our 78 cents was 1,170 for the $150,000 home. And then it says the equalized rate of 50, uh, equalized rate of 50 is 1,229. Well, that's still an increase of, I mean, that's an increase of $59, which is above, I guess, well, the equalized rate in every single one of them is higher than what the tax rate was in 2024. So I guess I'm kind of confused on how like that, that to me, like you have an increase of, you know, $50, $59, then you have an, you know, an increase of, it looks, you know, the, the other one here looks like $80, $70 on the 200,000. I, I, I guess I'm kind of curious because the, the statute says it has to be 100% or 101% or less for the equalized rate. And I, I just am curious as to that answer.
Yeah, I, I don't know. We, we ran the numbers and that is how they came out. I, I don't, I don't know how the math works, what anomaly there is in there in that calculation. I don't know where the Mark and Mark Rene, our finance director can help with that, but that, that's how the calculations come out when you, when you do the math.
Good evening, Chair Long and members of the board. When we ran the number for the equalized rate, we did have it at the $59 differential between what we had for the equalized rate and the 78 cents. And that ran all across the board. Cause remember, as was mentioned earlier, the number that was taken out for the new construction, because if you look at an equalized rate, either 49 cents, but we initially considered 50 cents versus 49 cents. And that differential is between that 49 cents and the 50 cent equalized rate.
All right. So help me explain the new construction aspect of things. Why that, why that matters?
It, it matters because that is the way the code of Virginia requires you to advertise the, the tax rate public hearing. Um, you know, if you, if you recall, Mr. Cully was always concerned that, that revenue from new construction that happened during '24 would be swallowed up, so, so to speak, by the, by the equalized rate. And I, I, I think this is the way, the, the state's way of accounting for that by requiring you to, to, to back out new construction from the total assessed value and determining the equalized rate based on that.
So just out of, I mean, I guess I'm confused. So at 49 cents is not, um, not, is not the, uh, no, it's not 49 cents. 50 cents is.
49 cents was the, was the equalized rate that we talked about when Mr. Cully made the presentation to April the 12th, but that included, that did not exclude new construction.
No, we would, we were just trying to make the math math. 240, if your house, the, the chart Mr. Black is referring to is in our packet. If your house is worth 245,760, which is the first line, you paid 1,170 in 2024. An equalized rate should have you paying probably less than 1,170 because you're at the bottom end of the average. But yet and still this chart lists 1,229, as he said, a $59 increase, which doesn't sound like the math is mapping.
But right, I, yeah, I, I can't, I'm not going to be able to explain the math. I didn't make the calculations, but.
Who, just like, curious to you, who made those calculations? So.
So another example that we'll use here when we look at the value on a $230,000 home, because I think Mr. Thomas was the first one that initiated the, um, the example on the $300,000 home, which ended at 2340. If you recall, he mapped it out during a previous board meeting. For the $300,000 home, that same $300,000 home would essentially be on average, because we're using the 63% assessed value would be at So if we're factoring in that, that assessed value for what they would have accounted for in 2024, 2025, that tax amount that they would have to pay is almost 4,000. DV up by two, that tells you how much the homeowner would essentially be accountable for, for the year. That's how we did the math in computing the rate for 2025.
So when you, when you did the computing, did you include like the treasurer's office? And then were all of you sitting down on the equalized rate?
We had numbers that were provided by the, by the, uh, excuse me, the commissioner of revenue office and then treasurer's office, as far as I'm concerned or not.
Yeah, Commissioner Evans, I'm sorry, yes.
Correct. Uh, so we had the numbers from them and that's how we, we came up with it.
Yeah. Mr. Cully used a, a spreadsheet provided by the commissioner's office to again arrive at the, backing out the new construction and determining that the, the equalized rate was 50 cents, not 49. He used, he used the, a spreadsheet provided by the treasurer's office to come up with that number.
Mr. Bassoon, do you agree with these numbers as presented? I, I, I'm really not that great in math, I promise you. But I just noticed that it was just when he went to an equalized rate in each category on that chart. I just noticed that it just seemed like it wasn't matching up. I mean, I understand a $10, $20 difference, but when you start talking 50 and $60 in some cases, I guess I was just kind of confused.
Yeah. And the spreadsheet that we provided, there was a box on the field on the spreadsheet to plug in the new construction numbers because those don't come from our office. It comes from Jason Cowan. So Jason Cowan, my understanding is he provided a report to admin that included the new construction number, which I am assuming is what number they plugged in to the spreadsheet that we provided. So our spreadsheet did not have a final percentage on it. If the new construction was needed to be plugged in that field and it would auto calculate the equalized rate based on that.
Okay.
But I, my understanding is the same as yours. When I look at the table, I, I think the intent of the law is to equalize the amount that the taxpayer is paying.
Right. Which says 101%.
Correct.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't know the calculation after that table left our office.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Underwood.
Um, Mr. Parton, um, I think I asked Mr. Cully at our last meeting. The year-to-date expenditures versus revenue projection. Do, do we have an idea where we are as of revenue versus expenditures and what are anticipated?
Yeah, I, I don't have those specific numbers, Mr. Underwood. I, 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 I do know that when I last talked to Mr. Cully, we were, we were trending towards spending into the fund balance. I, I, I can't tell you how much. I'd have, Mark may know more than I do, but I, I don't have any specifics on that.
So, so we're, we're trending toward spending more than we take in.
Correct.
For the year again.
Correct.
So, but we're going to balance it out of the fund balance.
Correct.
Correct. But we've always put money back into the fund balance at the end of the year, correct?
Except for last year, I believe.
I think we did, I think we, I think it was a smaller amount last year, the smallest that I'm aware of in the last five. But I think we something that was, that money went back into the fund balance, correct? You don't, you don't remember.
I thought it was a small amount of, of into the fund balance, but I, you know, I, I'm not sorry.
And the reason I'm asking is because we, we had to get to the point that revenue equals our, or gets close to our expenditures as possible to stay away from the fund balance. So we can do the one-time projects that our accountant says keeps us out of trouble.
Right.
And we can't go into the fund balance. I was just wondering how much.
A- as you mentioned, going into the fund balance for operating expenses is not something you, you want to do. And uh, obviously, you know, one-time expenditures will have to stop at some point because you need to maintain a healthy fund balance, but you do have some ability to make one-time expenditures before you get to that point.
Mr. Park. But I really need to know that number because that kind of helps me determine how much money we need to operate. You know, and that's, that's the thing that always is troubling that, is that we don't have an actual number to, to go by in terms of where we are compared to the revenue that we bring in and then what's our projected for the end of the year. Cause that tells us where we need to be operationally, is that's what I'm concerned about.
Right.
The operating fund for the county for the year.
Right.
I need to get, I need to get that to neutral. That's my goal.
Understood.
But if I don't know where I need to be, it's very difficult to set that rate and then say, I'm taking money out of the pocket of the taxpayer or I'm doing this to balance the, the operating costs for the year. And so I'm, I'm trying to balance this.
Understood. I, I'm sorry I can't be more helpful. Frankly, I, I didn't expect to find myself up here tonight, but.
You should always be prepared like a boy scout.
Are you finished, Mr. Underwood? Mr. Forehand shed some light on this.
I, I, with Mr. Seeley's help and Mr. Parton's help and Mr. Bassoon's help, I think I'm understanding. But let me restate it back to you. You can nod for me.
Okay.
So in 2024, which we're comparing our tax revenue, we're taking that number from calendar year 2020 or fiscal year 2024.
Calendar, calendar year.
Calendar year, and we have a number. And then as we're doing this reassessment, every home that sold in 2024 is pulled out.
New construction.
I mean, new construction. And we had a sizable amount of new construction of homes that were in the 400,000 plus range.
Yes, I want to say there's 318 new homes, somewhere on that.
And probably well over half were following that category. Or higher. Yeah, I know. So that number, that value is pulled out from that equation for the re, for the recalculation of the average or the equalized rate.
Correct.
So the remaining properties that didn't get, that were not new, you're equalizing that amount of tax revenue that previously included that new construction. Even if it was a part of a year, because it was part of a year. And that's why we would see a hundred, 110 dollar difference in equalized rate to non-equalized. Does that make?
It's theoretical. It's not.
It's 112 million dollars if I heard that in new construction.
I think it was 133.8 billion.
And then we get a number of homes.
There's none.
Median home, March 2025 is $475,000, Caroline County. So you're looking at sizable. The median home price is $475,000 right there. Of what's selling, of what's selling.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. I see the other lights on. No, I, I just, oh, you're off. Okay. Mr., uh, Mr. Parton. So I am reading this in that the equalized rate, which is sort of like a balancing act to get us where we were last year. Is
50 cents.
Is 50 cents. So what they're saying is with the new rates, we can come off of the 78, we could go down to 50. But then we know that we've, we've dipped in, you know, we're, we're, we're really doing a seesaw thing with our, our budget trying to keep from dipping in too far. So instead of doing from, like we did in the past, from 78 to, you know, 79 or 80 cents, we bring it down to 50. So basically now what we're doing is figuring out how much we need to add to that 50 to give us the cushion to keep from riding that red line again this coming year.
Yes, up, up to a maximum of two, two cents, 52.
And we have to set this rate to buy a certain amount, by a certain time, because we have to get the bills out on time. To give people time to, you know, to take it in and figure out, balance their checkbooks and, and contact, get it to their banks and that type of thing. So right now we are at 50. If we, at the tax rates, think of 50 and 78 just being the same thing. But we know we need to go up one or two cents, no more than two, to, to cover that, that red black line. So I think that's what I would like to open up for discussion or open up for a motion because we've got to get the tax bills out so people have time to, to do their own budgets at home. I know I will. So that is, is my feeling that we need to go ahead and, and set a tax rate of 51 or 52 cents. And if there's no further discussion, I don't mind making a, a motion if you all don't want to discuss the process any longer. All right?
I'm good.
All right. So I would make a motion that we look at this year's tax rate to 50. According to this memo, I am seeing a recommended tax rate of 52 cents. And I would make that motion.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So that's, that is the rate schedule. The rate schedule that was advertised included 52 cents for real estate and then everything else that like minerals tax and mobile homes that use real estate. And then all the other taxes, personal property are staying the same. But just want to clarify that your motion is the advertised rate schedule.
Yes.
52 cents, all the other taxes staying the same.
Stay the same. Mr. Underwood, discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair. This, this is a, a tough dilemma because I know we're not taking in, we're right, right on the border of revenue and operations costs, but given the state of the economy and what's going on in the, with the economy and people losing jobs and this is a, this is a very tough time to, to, to be increasing people's taxes is my perspective. And I just think we need to make sure we give it some consideration. The number of retired people in Caroline County, their cost of living adjustment was, I believe, two points, I'm retired, so two point something percent. And I'm sure that their increase would be more than that. So in addition to people losing their jobs and, and the cuts that have come through this administration, I just think we're in a, we're in a real uncertain time with the economy and, and in this country. And I would hate to see us push people further back. So I, I am concerned about a tax increase. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do we have a, do we have a second?
Okay. So we have a second. Discussion can continue.
Mr. Slack?
Yeah, I, um, this has been really hard for me, um, this budget, just because of the fact that I really haven't seen a budget. You know, it's been very odd, um, trying to set a tax rate without seeing what departments want. Where that was, uh, it's been very, very strange because usually we see, um, recommendations from the sheriff's department, recommends not just about the schools. I mean, the schools obviously are a big part of our budget, but fire department, how many deputies are needed or how many, uh, firemen are needed or how many people we need in planning office? So it encompasses a whole array of, you know, services besides just, you know, the schools. My concern, however, is the fact that, um, we have some stuff on the books that we have added, um, that we, we have to pay for. We have added, you know, we've got some payments coming up for, um, the stuff that we're talking about tonight. That's we're gonna have to pay for, uh, the Dawn Community Center or the expansion of the schools or Sparta Fire Station. We've, we've added stuff over the past year that, that is not cheap. And we, the last thing we want with our, one thing that's going for us, that's going really well is um, our bond rating. And I don't want to see, um, our bond rating suffer at all. And, um, you know, I understand the, the tightening the belt thing. Absolutely I do. And I understand what Mr. Underwood said. I just don't want to get us in a situation where we're back to a bad bond rating and having a hard time getting loans for stuff that we need because of the fact that, um, we don't have the necessary revenue. So I will support the fifty two cents. Thank you.
So any one else, any more discussion?
I just wanted to point out that Hanover adopted a rate of eighty one cents. And we're a neighbor from eighty one to eighty one. Yeah, it's a, it stayed the same. Yeah. I mean, we're, we're not Hanover, as someone in the crowd did mention, but it's, it's who, I'm, I'm pretty confident. And I think I said it when the equalized rate was advertised, it's a fifty percent or fifty cents or fifty one cents or fifty two cents or sixty cent tax rate is, you won't find it anywhere along the ninety five corridor from here to Maine.
Well, but, but yeah, see, that's the thing.
Thing is, we're not unique in, in property values going up. Hanover, Hanover, that's sixty three percent over four years. Okay? It is a lot, but we're not unique in that respect. Yeah.
Hanover does a reassessment every year.
They do.
We don't.
But I'm saying, but. So you're taking three percent, percent increase in value. Quite naturally, all the alarm bells are going to go off and all, you know what's going to break loose? Because as one of the speakers said, it's, it's just unimaginable that your house would go up in sixty three percent value in four years. So that's why we have to change the rate.
Yeah.
To, to, to make it comparable, but and, and, and we're, we're dealt this hand and we have to play this hand because that's how it's calculated in the state of Virginia. So some of we have no control over. Then the tax rate.
And, and the reality is we talk, I'm sorry, but you want to go ahead?
All right. Well, I have Mr. Sealy first. Sealy? The only way we're not going to see these kinds of increases is to do an assessment more often. Hanover has an assessment department. They're also, their growth is not what ours has been. We've added a fire station, which was 1.8 million dollars in just personnel. Two million dollars. Well, but the point is, is that we're adding, we're adding people and we haven't raised the tax rate significantly in eight years. We went, it went up a penny last year. That was the first increase in seven years. And we've been fortunate, but some of our expenses have outpaced some of the growth that we've gotten. I think we need to be mindful of that with the bond rating we have. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. I, I I admire all this discussion about the rate and what the rate should be. But the reality is for, for every citizen that, that has a house in the county, when they go pay their bill in June, whatever it is, they're going to look at what I paid last year and what I'm paying this year. And the equalized rate, I still think is not quite mathing, but at fifty cents, they theoretically would pay close to what they're paying last year. There are many people in the county who, who are struggling, who are barely making it. They're paycheck to paycheck, a, a bump in the road and, and they're in serious trouble. I know, I know what that's like, definitely. So when we say, you know, kind of cavalier, it's fifty two cents, that's not much. It's only eighty or a hundred and sixty dollars.
I don't think I was being cavalier, Mr. Thomas. Okay.
Um, I didn't say anybody. I mean, it's, it's just the way it is. You know, when we say that, there, there are people in the county who a hundred and eighty dollars a year means a lot to them. There are people, I know people in my, well, I could probably say I know people in everybody's district. And you were surprised when social services came before and told us where all the people who needed social service were. And a lot of them were on the western side of the county where we thought people were more affluent. People all over the county are hurting. We need to be able to say, we're going to hold taxes as, as close to normal as, or close to what they were as possible while still providing you the same services and in some cases more. We're going to give them more fire and rescue services. We're going to give them more sheriff deputies. It's the first time we've ever had the sheriff deputies fully staffed and with somebody else waiting to go in without a tax increase. So I said before, I wasn't gonna, you know, vote for tax increase. And I still don't think fifty cents is equalized, but you've got a motion, so go ahead and carry it.
It's motion on the floor. Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Nay.
Mr. Forehand? I vote aye. Mr. Sealy?
I vote aye.
Mr. Underwood?
I vote nay.
Motion passes. All right, where is that taken?
Close meeting.
Yeah, yeah. We, I, I wanted to get to the public hearing as close to seven thirty as possible, but we skipped over the remaining consent agenda item, consent. B. So we just need to have a vote on that consent agenda item.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda for.
Supplemental fire rescue budget? Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So move. Thank you, Mr. McKenzie, for catching that.
I move that the board convene in close meeting pursuant to the consultation with legal counsel and litigation exemptions of two point two dash three seven one 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 A seven A eight of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney. Also, the personnel exemption of section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia to discuss personnel matters related to county administration. And three, the contract exemption uh, of section two point two dash three seven one one A twenty nine of the Code of Virginia for discussion of terms of potential performance and incentive agreement related to a development project in the Mattapanat District. Where such a discussion in open session could adversely affect the bargaining position or, or negotiating strategy of the county. Can I get him a second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are in closed session.
Mr. Taylor, can I see you please?
Yeah.
Yeah.
...
The Caroline County Board of Supervisors certified that to the best of each board member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the opening meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed session were heard, discussed or considered by the board. Need a second?
Second.
A vote, Mr. Chairman?
ISO certified.
We have a vote first. I made the motion. We have a second. I... Nope. Die. Sorry.
ISO certified.
ISO certified.
As well?
ISO certified.
ISO certified.
And ISO certified.
Whispers.
ISO certified.
Do adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Up. Hold on.
You didn't do closing board comments. I don't know if you have any if you want to do them, but you...
Are there any closing board comments before we take a final vote?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so move. See you all on 13th. Thank you staff.